Good morning, everyone. This is the Wednesday, March 6, 2024. Regular meeting of the Nags Head Board of Commissioners is hereby called to order. If you will please join me in a moment of silence and if you, as you do, please remember the families and friends of the locals, the local fishermen who we lost, Charlie Griffin and Chad Dunn. Now if you'll stand as you're able and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda and a motion would be in order.
It's a move, second.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. The next item on our agenda are some recognitions and we will start with Chief Hale.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here before you today to introduce one of our newer officers to the department, Dylan Berry. Dylan was born in Elizabeth City and raised in Manio, graduating from Manio High School as well. He started his law enforcement career with the Dare County Sheriff's Office and then went on to Marine Patrol. Even though Dylan loved being on the water, he realized his law enforcement career was better with traffic enforcement on a patrol level and joined our agency in December. He has finished FTO and is quickly adapted to our agency's standards. Dylan is very motivated and he enjoys working traffic. Dylan and his wife, Lauren, reside in Manio with their large animal family of three canines, a horse, two ducks, eight chickens and a rooster. He enjoys being on a boat with his wife and relaxing doing yard work in his off time. Dylan, we're glad to have you here and look forward to a long career with you. Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Continue with Chief Hale.
All right. Good morning again. I'm here before you to introduce our newest officer to the department, Delania Nefakis, or DeeDee as we call her. Delania was born in Sofia, Bulgaria, but moved to the Outer Banks in 2007 as a J-1 student working in Corolla. DeeDee has always wanted to be in law enforcement and she put herself through BLET at COA in 2019 and started with KDH after she graduated. She resides in Nags, she resided in Nags Head for over five years and had recently moved to Currituck County. DeeDee has finished her FTO as well and is adapting to our agency's standards. She is highly motivated and looks forward to having a long career with our agency. DeeDee has a 16-month-old little boy that she enjoys spending time with on her days off. We're glad to have DeeDee here and look forward to her long career. Welcome aboard.
Her next recognition is for five years of service and I'll call Chief Wells to the podium.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. It is my distinct honor to introduce Engineer James Phillips, a dedicated Nags Head Fire Department member. James, or as we call him Jimmy, began his career with the town in February 4, 2019. Engineer Phillips has demonstrated unwavering dedication and served with distinction for five years, embodying the core values of our department: courage, commitment and compassion. Engineer Phillips has consistently demonstrated bravery when confronted with challenges, be it during an emergency response or supporting his team through critical events. His steadfast dedication to the safety of our community is evident in his relentless hours he has devoted to service. Additionally, Engineer Phillips has exhibited empathy, recognizing the human aspect in each of the calls he's responded to. In addition to his solid service with Nags Head Fire Department, Engineer Phillips is dedicated professional and a family man. Married to Allie for the past nine years, they have two children, Harper and Bradley. He is the son of Brittany Phillips, our Deputy Town clerk, and his dad David Phillips, Deputy Fire Chief at Collington. Outside of work, Jimmy enjoys spending time with his family, working on diesel engines and watching the Carolina Panthers and the Alabama Crimson Tide football teams. It is my pleasure to introduce Engineer Phillips for your recognition.
Thank you. We really appreciate our employees who achieved these years of service and appreciate their dedication to the town of Nags Head. The next recognition is for 25 years of service and I'll call Chief Hale back to the podium.
Good morning again, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. It's my pleasure to come before you today to recognize Deputy Chief Chris Montgomery for 25 years of service with the town. Chris came to Nags Head after working two years with the Fairfield Police Department of Connecticut. He started out as patrol, as a patrol officer, excuse me, and worked his way up through the ranks in patrol and served as our Sergeant over Criminal Investigations Division. Chris was promoted to Lieutenant in 2016 over the Patrol Division and then promoted to Deputy Chief in the fall of 2022 and is a great asset to our department. Chris has a wealth of knowledge that he brings to us and he is one that doesn't put, not put it to use. He is one of our general instructors as well as specializing in firearms and rapid deployment for the department. Chris handles all of our in-service training to make sure those records are in order for the annual audit by the North Carolina Training and Standards Commission. In his free time, Chris enjoys traveling to watch his daughter play soccer and spending time with his family on the boat. Chris, congratulations. Thank you for 25 years and look forward to a few more.
I asked Chris to stay up and ask the board to come around for a presentation.
For Chris, we have for you a 25-year service can, which we're proud to present to you. We've been there a long time since you left my neighborhood. We were there for a long time and we will admit to that and we really appreciate that. Thank you very much. We also have for you a strategic appreciation, which we impart that the Nags Head Board of Commissioners express the deepest gratitude for your steadfast leadership, selfless sacrifice and tireless efforts in maintaining public safety and extended best wishes for continued success and many more productive years for the town. And please convey our thanks to your family as well, because I know an officer does not do this alone.
And you know what happens with some regularity in the town of Nags Head, that we get to recognize someone for 15, 20 or 25 years of service. I think that speaks to our staff, the people who join the town. It speaks to our leadership and I think it speaks to our community and the relationship that our staff enjoy with our community here, that people are, stay and achieve that kind of, that kind of service. Our next item on the agenda is a presentation from Arts and Culture Committee and I will call Planning Director Wyatt to the podium.
I actually want to talk to Paige Griffin. She passed it off this year. So you get me.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. We are in our seventh season and this year we decided to, instead of, in previous years we've looked back at a review of what we've done. However, this year we decided to do a comparison and also look forward to tell you what we're hoping for, for 2024. This, we can start with that slide. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So we started with this slide because this is kind of what started the activities at Dowdy Park. If you remember when we did the survey back in 2017, one of the components that our neighboring people and community wanted was a market. And thankfully, they've supported it and we have grown to four different types of markets. We obviously have the summer market, which is our most popular. They usually run 10 to 14 and they run during the summer months. This past year, we added the Family Fun Night markets and they are consistent with the theme that we're running for that night. The third type of market we have is our holiday market and we completed the fourth season with that this past year. It has become increasingly popular with locals and people as far as Elizabeth City. And then our winter markets, this was our first season for us this year. We've been running that on the second Saturday, January through April. And that is primarily our food market. The next slide gives you stats of our farmer's market. This is mainly the summer and then highlights some of holiday. We had 66 vendors. If you add the old vendors, the seniority, and then the new vendors, we took 13. Thirty-seven, thirteen make up 50 of the 66 vendors. Were perishables, consumables, plants, soap makers, farmers, producers, kombucha, all consumable items. And the vendors continue to come to us from a 75-mile radius as far as Swan Quarter. The highest week was July 4th and we had over 1,000 visitors that day. We typically don't have that much. It's usually in the 650 range, but that was a big market. And ironically, this year, the 4th is going to fall on a Thursday, so we'll have a 4th of July market. Interesting enough, this tells you how much the community has rallied around it. We spent little to no monies on advertising for this market. We use Facebook, we use Instagram. We did do an online newspaper, but other than that, it is word of mouth and then posters posted throughout the town. The summer fees generated $15,840 in our vendor fees alone. Looking forward, oh, this is some of the pictures of some of our new vendors. I will take a minute and highlight right here, we'll talk about it later in this presentation, but on the bottom middle slide is Outer Banks Health. We, they were one of our partners. We have several sponsorships that we partnered with this year. One of the interesting things that Outer Banks Health decided to do was, it was called Eat the Rainbow. It was their campaign. They took the produce that the farmers had that week or what was in season and fresh. They created healthy recipes and then had the samples and then also gave out cards. And that was very successful for them and for us. We would have people coming each week to look to see what the new recipe was. Luckily, we are going to partner with them again this year. They've decided to sign up with us again as far as a sponsor. So we're very appreciative of that. Looking forward to 2024 is the next slide. We are, we are driven by the school calendar and so our dates are already pretty much set, June 13 through August 15. They do run nine to one, so it gives us 10 markets and it has become, excuse me, super challenging to maintain a manageable number of new vendors while also being loyal to those that have seniority. And so that's something that the Arts and Cultural Committee have been looking at last year and this year and are considering a couple of different options. One of them is setting aside a number of new slots for vendors that are coming in, so we don't leave anyone out. The next slide is one of our most popular next to markets events as far as running during the summer. It's our summer concert series. Last year, we had 10 bands scheduled in 2023. We were able to host nine of them. The one that canceled last year is actually performing for us this year. Thankfully, they were a local band. We do, of the 10 to 12 bands that we have, we try and stay locally here for at least half of them and then reach outside the area for others, giving our local community the dollars for sure. In 2024, some of the bands have expressed that they are able to provide their own sound and so that frees up some of our monies. And also our sponsorships have increased in the concert series and so that alone has helped us. This year, we're looking at probably 10 to 12 again this year. The highlight in this picture is definitely the 82nd Airborne Military Band. That crowd drew 750 people and it was a fabulous night. When I talk to them again this year, they are not allowed to come every year, so we're on their docket for next year already, 2025. And this year, we hope to have Rhythm and Blues come to us, another military band, just not as large. The Family Fun Nights were new for us last year and what we did was we created a theme, if you will. We partnered with SPCA, we partnered with the Master Gardeners, we worked with the Fire Department and the Police Department to create a Back to School Kids Night and have those plans for this year as well as growing it into more activities in, within that themed night. Some of the activities, you'll see the horses, which is the Corolla Wild Horse Fund, they are bringing a documentary, Riptide, the horse will actually be in attendance as well. We are working with storytellers from, one is from DC, one is from Richmond. They will come at different times, June through August, and talk everything from sea animals to ocean safety, those type things. So continuing to grow this program, it is very well received. Being last year, I think our lowest number was 175 people. Our highest was right at 325. Community definitely rallied around this. The holiday markets, we grew out of COVID four years ago when we needed to be outside and the Arts and Culture Committee brainstormed a way for us to continue to be outside and sell and produce. And so this is what came from that. This year, we had 78 vendors. We had three Saturday markets and then one evening. The generated funds from this were 6,500 and this continues to grow. And we will do this again next year, which I think is close to the next slide. We are working on the application process for this next year. For the holiday markets, we will continue with the tree lighting and the candy cane hunt this year as well. We are not getting a lot of feedback from the town decorating contest, so the Arts and Cultural Committee are looking at other ways to involve the community with that residential and business. And while I'm talking about them, I want to highlight Peggy Saporito and Molly Vaughn that are here today. They serve as part of the committee members and just want to say a thank you to them because I am just the facilitator. They are the brains behind what I do. And so thank you to both of you for being here this morning. Appreciate it. Winter markets was another brainstorming idea they had and it has been very well received. The community has come out in full force for this. The first one was held in January and we had maybe eight vendors. Of those eight, two were sold out by 11 o'clock and we typically run nine to 12. This number has continued to grow, but we are really trying to keep it food only and keep it small. And so that is really the only requirement that we have for this market, that you're local, that you sell food. So. Other happenings for this next year, we are continuing to host yoga and Fitness Fridays was a brainstorm of Carrie Sanders last year. She came up with alternating Pilates core work and people showed up for it, locals and visitors. That is going to run 10 weeks this year, thanks to Tortugas Live. That will continue to progress as far as the offerings and we have three different instructors that alternate and then we advertise what class is being offered. Coastal Carolina Vacations and Sales has picked up yoga again this year for their sponsorship. We are looking at possibly showing movies at Barn Street just for more intimate setting as opposed to Dowdy Park. Dowdy Park is wonderful, but sometimes when we're showing movies, there's so much activity, even with the speakers, it's loud, it's hard, it's loud, but it's also hard to hear. So the committee again chose to look at Barn Street. We have set the screen up. Jeremy Russell, who's not here today, he was instrumental in helping me select the movie equipment, getting the screen. He's also on our board and was instrumental, so thanks to him for that. And it looks like it will work, so we'll just advertise both of those places. We are continuing with our Art Mast project. Two of the newest artists are Jackie and Kate. Kate has a finesse, for lack of a better word, in shore life, birds, animals, and Jackie is surfers. And so they both are working on those and should be completed by, by this, this summer. So we're excited for those. The next initiative that the Arts and Cultural Committee have come up with, this was a brainchild of Molly Vaughn and she is interested in the public art project of making pedestrian safety initiative. You actually color crosswalks and it is proven to slow down traffic. You can see the, to our right top picture, that's some of the creation that has been in some of the crosswalks. Because we are trying not to deal with DOT at this moment and not going to the beach road, we are planning Bonnet and Wrightsville Beach, Wrightsville Beach, Wrightsville Avenue Crosswalk. And so that's where we're going to start this initiative. Hoping to work with Nags Head Elementary students, but definitely will work with local artists. The bottom picture is Chris Wheeler's rendition of some graphics for our paint and skate. This is another, these are our two big projects for this next year with the Arts and Cultural Committee. And he has come up with several renderings that he feels like would be appropriate for the skate park and then also trying to come up with a mural where the local kids can be involved. And so that's our plans for this fall, once we get through our main season of summer. The other, on the left-hand side bottom, you will see a loom. I believe Sam Brown came up with this and she is interested because of the conservatory next door into a loom of weaving. And you think, well, what are you going to weave? But the great thing is it comes from nature. It could be trash, it could be flowers, it could be sprigs from a tree, a different type of tree. And so this is another one of the things we're looking at for this next fall. And then we're participating again in Art Rages, which is, they're in their 35th year, so we're happy to participate with that. It is held at Dowdy Park. The town does provide some support for that, but more importantly, Arts and Cultural Committee has a booth and they are there participating and having fun for the day. Sponsorships, we, we've been so very blessed. Last year was the first time that we decided to do this and I'm not a salesperson, but we had great response as far as that goes. So I was very appreciative of those who, who allowed us to take a chance. Those people, it was Stan White, Coastal Vacations, Sales and Rentals, Ann Cabell Baum, and who am I missing? OBX Health. Those were our four last year. We anticipate this year about 5,500 for this 2024 season. We are adding to the mix Tortugas Live and Booty Treats and anybody else who contacts me before we get to summer. But it is, it's building that sense of community and being involved in partnerships that provide these programs and so for that, we are, we are grateful. The next slide is a big thank you and I was tallying up hours last night of volunteers alone. We had almost 100 hours in volunteer and they came from four people. It was Mary Kelly, Peggy Saporito, Betty White and Kelly Greider. 100 hours. That's a lot of hours just in volunteerism and that is huge to the vendors, to the activities that they are participating in, to the people that come and visit our town in Dowdy Park and to the locals. And I cannot say enough about the work that they do. They're knowledgeable and they are just so helpful. So appreciative of those ladies and will always take more if anybody's watching. But the other thank you is to you for allowing us to continue to grow this program and for the Arts and Culture Committee. To fire and police, I will say, I have never been told no, knock on wood, but I, they are very receptive. They are very receptive to what we are trying to do in providing support and to also being present. And that speaks volumes as, as far as the community outlet that we have there. This just talks more about our partners and also to the community. And one of the things I wanted to end today with was a letter from a mother. It's definitely a feel-good story, but it's a great example to me of the importance of providing opportunities within our community to serve and, and to work together as we continue to grow. This particular story comes from the mother of a small business. She allowed their teenage son, who was not yet driving, to run their stand. She did come to me and she asked this past year if they would be allowed to come in, drop him off and then come out at, at the end of market to come back and retrieve him. And it was up to him to plan, to prep the products, to make sure he had all the marketing, to make sure he had the right bank, to make sure he packed his lunch, just to be at market. And through the summer, I got to say, I was so impressed. Not only impressed with him because you could see him change, you could see his hair change, you could see even his dress. He went from T-shirts to a colored shirt or from flip flops to closed-toed shoes. Just a change in his dress, but mostly impressed with the vendors around him. And no one told him that he was new, but it was that community that comes together to help each other. He became friends with other vendors, he provided assistance and his muscle to help them when he needed. And he bloomed from this shy, very awkward teenage kid to a competent young man, to by the end of the market, he was coming up with new ideas of ways that their family business could move towards. And I'm, I'm happy to report, he actually surpassed his goals for his fund for his first car. for his fund for his first car. So that was a yay for him. But what a great example of building community. And I think this is one of the many reasons that we, as a town, continue to choose and show support for these community events. It's because of these examples that our continued support from locals and from other towns even have reached out to say, hey, how did you do this? Hey, what is it that makes you different? And I'm happy to tell them, it's our locals. It's our people that come. And even though they may not live here year-round, they consider themselves Nags Headers. And so for that reason, I am grateful. So I think that's all that I have. Any questions? I know it was a lot.
And before I turn to questions, I want to say a couple of things. One, I appreciate the way that you and others have managed the events at the park. I look at our market, and I go to a lot of the other markets, and yeah, our market really stands out for its quality. And I know maintaining that balance is hard, and I appreciate that. I think also when we've had these reports, I at least have been remiss, others may have mentioned it, appreciating Arts and Culture Committee and the work that they put in and the ideas that they bring to this, and it all works really well. And I think citizens really could wish for no more than to have an asset that they invested in that is as well managed as Doughty Park is. And I also want to add, before I turn it over, appreciate the effort toward Barn Street and distributing events as well. The lighting is always difficult at Doughty Park because it's full sun, and you know, that may even be better back at Barn Street because there are trees and a little bit of, you know, so that late sun, maybe you can manage a little better with the screens. Bob, any questions or comments?
Well, no questions. I mean, just, you guys have done a tremendous job, obviously, from the amount of attendees that are coming out there. And it's a great thing for the community, and it's just, it's really good to see. And I really like the idea of the crosswalk. I've read a bunch of articles about that. I'm glad to see you guys moving forward with initiatives like that, because they've proven in some cities the safety that it helps in the intersections and stuff. So yeah, thanks to you guys and to the committee and everybody. You guys have done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the work, excuse me, that you do, to the help that the committee gives you, as well as the volunteers that you listed. I know it takes a lot. I see, hear that you're really stretched out, and maybe we can, hopefully we can do something to help out with that in the coming year. We appreciate what you do and just the events that we have there. They're really, really nice for our residents and visitors. So thank you.
Commissioner Sears.
Paige, we appreciate you and the committee, and the work is outstanding, and you should see that in the county because of how many areas now are trying to replicate what you're doing. So thank you again for the work and all the new ideas. Appreciate it.
I echo what everyone said. Thank you so much for all your hard work, especially the volunteers and the committee, going to the markets, just seeing how much you guys put into it. It's clearly a team effort, and it definitely shows. I recently had family down for this fall, and when we woke up on the weekend and I wanted to see what they wanted to do, they all wanted to go to Doughty Park. And I hadn't mentioned it yet to them, so I thought it was really cool. It just shows that not just locals, but visitors, you really are touching a lot of people with it that want to go and see it, and it's really exciting to see. So thank you for all your hard work, Paige.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paige. Thank you, committee. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is public comment, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Leidy. Welcome, Mr. Leidy.
Thank you.
If you're late, you don't get the handshake.
Apparently not. I apologize for being late. At this time, the Board welcomes members of the public to provide comment to the Board of Commissioners. This is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the Board rarely responds to public comment, but it is an opportunity for people to express matters of interest or concern that they may have to the whole Board. We also have a public hearing on the agenda for today. If you're here to speak at that public hearing, you can reserve your comments until that time. But if you wish to provide public comment, if you'll please start by approaching the podium, telling us who you are and where you live, and then addressing your comments to the Board, and I will also let you know when your five minutes is about up.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, and guests. My name is Debbie Swick, and I reside in Southern Shores, although I love Nags Head. Daddy lives in Nags Head. I am the creator of ban balloon releases in North Carolina. I hope you have all received and reviewed my proposal. I have, in all the local municipalities, I have sent it out to all 100 counties and am working with a state senator. Kind of proud and kind of disappointed all at the same time. I am the first person to bring this to the state senate. It's kind of, I thought maybe it would have been done years ago because there are other states that are absolutely working on this, but it is a much necessary item, not only for our environment, but for wildlife, both of which I cannot stand litter, as you can see. I can't stand litter, and I love the wildlife, so those are the driving forces. I have in my proposal four components that I ask you to consider. I know wholeheartedly how very difficult it is to enforce an ordinance about releasing balloons. I ask you to consider, when somebody tosses a piece of cardboard or a soda bottle onto the ground, it is litter, and an officer or a town council member or whoever will address it. The litter is removed. That balloon, because it is filled with lighter-than-air gas, be it nitrous or helium, if it is released, and there is nothing to prohibit that, it is gone. And from our coastal areas, it's going to travel, and it's going to travel out into the oceans, and it is going to travel about 1,300 miles, and it's going to do damage. This balloon was picked up in Duck last week, and as you can see, all the color is worn off, and it floats, and it looks like food, and these animals are dying. They're dying, they're having horrible injuries. We just lost another whale this morning. I just got the call that we have another dead whale in Corolla. And those majestic animals shouldn't be, I'm not saying it was a balloon yet, but we shouldn't be losing animals to human impact at all. I have got the support of NEST, Southern Shore Civic Association, the Community Appearance Committee of Kill Devil Hills, Dunes of Dare, Outer Banks Women's Club, the North Carolina Beach Buggy Association, and the National Park Service and the aquarium, as much as they are able to do. I have just gained support of the Outer Banks Association of Realtors, and their 1,000 members are no longer allowed to use balloons to advertise open houses. Left unattended, these strings will fray, they will take off. Sometimes they break them off at the end of the night. But an accidental release is just as dangerous as a purposeful release. There's alternatives to it. There are still people that release balloons in memorial purposes, and those do damage. They are strangling sea turtles, they're being ingested by whales. We all remember that baby whale that died in November down in Wrightsville Beach. So I ask you to consider endorsing these as ordinances. As difficult as it is, and as much as it falls underneath the litter ordinances that are already in place, your town is magnificent. I am in awe every time I drive to see Daddy, how very clean you keep it. And not every place does that. Back in December, at the whale that beached itself at Jeanette's Pier, I picked up a balloon myself, had an identification on it, and I Googled it. It came here from 760 miles away from Birmingham, Alabama. Proud to say, I contacted that real estate company, which is massive, and they too have decided, from Alabama, to no longer permit balloons. There's baby steps that are being taken. I am educating everywhere I can. I've been on the news and the radio and interviews for newspapers, and I speak at organizations and will continue to do so and encourage you to do the same. But in ordinance, I believe people are deterred when they hear, hey, you can't do that, it's against the law. There's always going to be those that don't follow the letter of the law, we know that. But at least if you have some backbone to it, it is separate from litter, and it is connected to litter, but it does need its special attention. So I thank you very much for your support, and I will hope to hear from you soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swick. Anybody else wish to comment to the Board? If not, at this time, we will conclude the public comment session.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda, and it's my understanding there's an item that needs some discussion, so I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we present, that we approve as presented, with the exception of number eight. If we could have number eight pulled for further discussion, please.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right. And I will take the prerogative as mayor, if I may, to go ahead, and let's address item E8 at this point on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Tell manager, I just, I think there's a small group of people in our community that don't understand how this program operates. I'm in full support of it. I think it's a great program. I think it helps us out on the beach road during the summertime. I was just wondering if you could give us an overview of the program and how it is funded.
Okay, sure, no problem. So this is our cart rollback program, and it's something we started about three years ago to address issues we were having on the beach road with carts being left out, carts not being pulled out at the right time or pulled back at the right time. And ultimately, what that results in is overflowing trash, because they're not able to utilize the actual capacity we provide of two pickups a week. The carts end up blowing into the roadway if left out, and it's unsightly to see all the carts alongside the road the entire week. So we came up with this program to initiate cart rollback. So what happens is between the months of May and the end of October, we hire a company that will come and bring the carts from the home all the way to the street the night before collection, and then the morning of collection, they'll come back, pull it all the way back to the home, and they do that twice a week. So that's four collections per home per week. And so that happens over the course of six months. And we do charge a fee for the service, which is charged directly to the owner who receives the service. It's not funded through the general tax base. It's funded by the owners who receive the service. It applies to properties that are on the beach road who have driveways that actually front on the beach road, on North-South Virginia Deer Trail or on Old Oregon Inlet Road. Those are the properties that we identified as being the most problematic, especially for the carts being blown into the road and/or onto the multi-use paths. It has worked really well, and we've received a lot of positive comments. Obviously, no program is perfect, but I think most of us can agree, when we drive down the beach road on Monday during the middle of the day, what we used to see was a line of carts the entire way, and now we see a clean, visually unimpaired multi-use path in beach roads. So we have received a lot of comments, especially from the property managers, which we've been meeting with regularly. They really appreciate the service. It sort of takes a burden off of them to have to deal with these issues. And so we've been doing it for three years. The company we've been working with had a three-year contract, actually it was a one-year contract. We've re-executed for three years. They've asked for an increase in the cost, and that's what we're coming to you about, as well as we want you to approve the contract beyond the end of this fiscal year, through the summer season, which would run until the end of October. And because the contract goes beyond the end of this fiscal year, the money hasn't been budgeted yet, so we need Board approval for that. And that's the primary reason we're asking you for this. The fees we collect, we're not proposing to increase those at all. So we're just asking for an increase in the contract amount, but not the fees that are charged to the owners themselves. And so I hope that explains.
And we're not subsidizing that at all, those fees that you pay for the service.
Not at all. The fees pay for the entire cost of the contract.
I appreciate his explanation. Again, I understood it, but I think there was some misinformation out in the community. And hearing that, if there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve as presented.
Okay. I have a motion. Is there a second? Is there further discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Great. Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. That brings us next to item F, public hearings. And this is a public hearing on a text amendment, and I will turn it back over to Mr. Leidy and to Deputy Planning Director Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will open the public hearing to consider text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance that would remove the use of restaurant drive-through. And we'll begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis provided by the Planning Director, Joe Costello.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Commissioners. At the January 3rd meeting, the Board directed staff to initiate a text amendment process that would remove the use of drive-through restaurants from the UDO. Staff believes that the proposed text amendment before you reflects the Board's guidance. Currently, drive-through restaurants are only allowed within our C2 General Commercial Zoning District, as well as our Village Special Development District. The Village Property Owners Association met and reviewed the proposed text amendment and were supportive of removing the use from the UDO. During the Planning Board's January 19th meeting, they unanimously recommended that we move forward with removing the use of drive-through restaurant from the UDO. Just as a note, that this text amendment would only remove the use of drive-through restaurant. It would not pertain to other uses, such as pharmacies or banks, that may or may not have drive-throughs. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. That's all I have to say.
Does the Board have any questions for Joe? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody wish to speak regarding this proposed text amendment? Does the Board wish to receive any other information about this before you deliberate? If not, we will now conclude the public hearing on this proposed text amendment.
All right. Thank you, John. And we can either start this with a motion or comment from Board members. If someone's interested in making a motion and then discussion, that would be in order. Maybe not. I'm due to start at this end, so Commissioner Lambert?
I support this text amendment. You know, when we talked about it in January, when I think about the character of Nags Head and the long-term vision for Nags Head, I don't see drive-throughs in that. And when I looked at our community survey, I see a lot of comments that talk about preserving the character of Nags Head. I see a lot of comments about no overdevelopment of Nags Head. I see concerns about traffic, and I really see a community that aligns and supports our land use plan. So I support this text amendment because I think it brings our UDO closer to our land use plan.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Sears?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Brinkley?
Thank you.
My mind hasn't changed from last month. I still support it. That's really all I have to say about it. I agree with Commissioner Lambert.
All right. Very good. In which case, now, having done that, I think a motion would now be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve this text amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second it.
We have a motion and a second. In the, in the further discussion, you know, I'm going to explain my vote, because last month or a couple of months ago, I was the lone vote to support a text amendment that would have allowed drive-throughs in shopping centers as one of the uses in shopping centers. And I did that. A speaker said that I was presenting false equivalences in my defense of that, of that position. What I was trying to point out were some real but nonsensical inequivalences in the ordinance, because every property around that shopping center could have built a drive-through despite the land use plan, but the shopping center could not. And, but I am aware, having sat through many of the discussions through the development of the land use plan and then the UDO, that Nags Head does have this bias against drive-throughs. And so my intent, and it is not inconsistent, at least not in my mind, is to support this ordinance. So if there's no further discussion, then all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Thank you. The next item on our agenda are reports and recommendations from the Planning Board and the Planning and Development Director, Director Wyatt.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I believe I'll be pretty brief.
I believe I'll be pretty brief this morning with our updates. So the planning board, at their last meeting on February 20th, they looked at a couple of text amendments. One of those was an amendment to allow the conversion of transient hotel units to be converted to long-term rental. Planning boards looked at this a couple times. In talking with the applicant, we seem to be coming to the consensus on what a good set of regulations would look like. And so that's going to be a public hearing at your April meeting, so you'll be seeing that soon. There was also a presentation of a text amendment that would prohibit driving over or parking on septic systems when they're adjacent to a drive aisle or driveway. And the conversations were positive. They were favorable of the amendment. But we did note that if adopted as is, the amendment would be affecting properties that really don't already have a problem with parking on their septic field. And so maybe we can keep this one on track, but also look at another alternative, which may be just expressly prohibiting parking on your septic field in the town code. So it's not as proactive as dealing with it upfront, but when we notice it, we can issue the violation, and then the property owner would then have to go through the process. I just wanted to bring that to your attention, what was presented at the planning board and what has had a favorable recommendation is obviously a good ordinance, but it may affect people within the community that don't necessarily deserve to be impacted. So we'll continue to look at that and bring that back to you likely in April as well. The planning board had asked that we, that the planning department provides, were the GIS map of protected buffers in the town. So this was our NC DOT enhancement plannings, as well as what we require to be preserved as part of a subdivision plan approval. So Joe Costello, Deputy Planning Director, did do that, presented that, and it was very well received. Board of Adjustment, we did have a appeal that the Board of Adjustment heard at their February 8 meeting. This dealt with an accessory structure being utilized as a second dwelling unit. They did uphold the staff's determination to issue the notice of violation, but they did say that we have some terminology in our code that should likely be revised, talking about accessory structures versus ADUs and that type of thing. So I know part of our strategic plan is we were looking at drafting an ADU ordinance with a menu of options for consideration, and I think revising those definitions would be part of that. So I think we're already in the process of doing that. Already updated on septic health, the Estreem Shoreline Management Plan. We're obviously moving ahead with some grants there, which will be discussed at an upcoming budget workshop later on today. The, as far as the EV Action Plan and our Level 2 chargers, things are moving ahead really quickly with this. We've contracted with Low Wire Technologies to do the, purchase the equipment, install the equipment, run the electrical, and they've already pulled permits and are planning to get underway with that soon. Sand relocation, new management. As of the beginning of March, $262,500 have been allocated from the cost share program, and we have about 180 applications out there. And we just had a great update from Page on Daddy Park, so I have nothing more to say about that. So happy to ask and answer any questions if you have any.
Just real quick, I got a text message from an audience member, not here, but they can't hear you. If you could, they were saying that, I'm sorry, just I wanted to bring that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sanders?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Thank you for the update. Sorry to interrupt, but.
I apologize. Thank you.
Hey, great work. You guys are staying extremely busy, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
And Commissioner?
Comments? Thank you for your hard work.
All right, thank you, Kelly.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That brings us to old business items tabled from our previous meeting, and this would be appointments to a multifamily ordinance working group, and I will turn it to Manager Garman.
Thank you, Mayor. So last month, the planning department, the planning board presented an ordinance that would reinstate multifamily as a use in the town code. The board held a public hearing and received numerous public comments on that ordinance, as well as comments from other groups submitted in writing. There were some concerns about the ordinance in terms of some provisions that may make the ordinance overly burdensome. The board had a discussion about it and decided to try and flesh out what those issues would be through the use of a working group that would involve some of the folks that expressed concerns, as well as members of the planning board and the Board of Commissioners, as well as others. The board asked staff to make a recommendation on the composition of this committee, as well as a charge. And so that's what we have for you here today. What we had suggested was a group consisting of two members of the Board of Commissioners, two members of the planning board, one town resident, a town business owner, and two individuals representing the Dare County Home Builders and/or the Outer Banks Association of Realtors. The planning board has suggested two of its members for consideration, Mead Gwynn and Molly Harrison. And then I guess it would be up to the board to determine the other members from the community. The committee charge, which has been drafted on the screen, would be suggested as follows. To consider the draft multifamily ordinance written by the planning board. So basically, I think the intent here is to not start from scratch, but look at the ordinance and maybe tweak some of the provisions or modify things as suggested by newer information learned by the committee. To preserve the intent of the ordinance, which speaks to what I just said, obviously to protect the character of Nags Head and to provide new alternatives for workforce and long-term housing without increasing the stock of short-term rentals. So I believe this jives with what the board said last month. You know, they want this ordinance to be able to accomplish something, and so they want something that people can actually respond to and construct a project. For third, to evaluate conditions or standards which would render such projects unfeasible due to financing, construction, configuration, or management, and then to suggest additional measures that would achieve the aforementioned goals. And obviously, the group could bring in other subject matter experts to provide information on some of these topics. The suggested timeframe would be about three months, so around the June timeframe. And that's what we have for you today.
Thank you, Andy. Before we get to any of the nomination steps, do any board members have any questions for Andy? All right, then I think the first thing that I would do is ask that the board affirm the planning board nominations for Mead Gwynn and Molly Harrison. So if I could get a motion to that fact.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you. Next would be appropriate, I think, to name two members of the Board of Commissioners. And if someone has a nomination for that.
Mayor, I would like to nominate Commissioner Lambert and Commissioner Brinkley for that position.
All right, thank you. I have a second. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you. The next item would be a town resident. We have had expressed interest. And I would ask that someone.
I know there's been one interview, or one interview, one email that we all got from a gentleman, Basil. Was that, was there anybody else?
There's not.
I'd make a motion that we appoint him second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to appoint Basil Belches to the committee. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you. The next item would be to nominate a business owner from the community.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate a business owner, Chris Greening. He owns and operates TW's Bait and Tackle for the last 70 years since Terry Stewart sold. I'd like to make a motion that he be appointed to the committee.
All right, I have a motion and a second for that. I think if there's, is there a discussion on that? That's what I would ask. All right, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you. The next would be, and, and, you know, there's a couple of ways to do this. Two individuals representing the Dare County Home Builders Association and/or Outer Banks Association of Realtors. That is a total of two, so that the committee is eight. And those representatives are here in the audience, so I would ask if they, they themselves or if they have designees that they would recommend appointment to the committee.
Would it be me or Elon?
Okay, all right, thank you. Donna? Okay, all right, thank you. Then I believe a motion would be in order for to nominate Donna and Duke to the committee as representatives of their respective organizations.
So move second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you.
Can I ask a question for clarification? These are the members, but the members can invite people to come in from the committees, such as Commissioner Lambert suggested, a banking or financial person.
Other business leaders, they can invite anybody they want to. They think that informs them. So if it's other business representatives of the community who may be involved in housing their employees, if it is builders from the community, if it is banking, finance, homeowner, home associations, anybody they want that can answer the questions to resolve their charge, which, when we approve, basically, having made the nominations, I would suggest that a motion to approve the recommendation of staff, including the charge, and the schedule would be in order. And then they can do whatever they need to do.
I'll make that motion.
Will there be a chairman or facilitator?
This, if I may, and just for the public, the question from Mr. Garrity, who is now a member of the committee, is about election of a chair or how the committee will run itself. This committee will be staffed by the town staff. So you'll have the manager, and I would say probably the planning director to some degree, to your, at your disposal, to help you work through this process. And if you find you need a chair, then I would suggest that you nominate and elect a chair. I suspect that won't be necessary. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, then I think a motion to accept the staff recommendation, including the charge, would be in order.
So move second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing?
I would like to say before that, that, you know, my stand anyways is the planning board took on an enormous project in rewriting the multifamily ordinance, and at which time they had a lot of hurdles to do. They came up with a great idea, a great ordinance to some aspects, but in other aspects, it was an undevelopable ordinance. So what we're trying to do with this committee, I feel personally, I don't know what the board's feeling, is please everybody, or at least the majority of someone, so we can have function in the ordinance. So I hope that our planning board understands that we appreciate their work and their efforts, and I hope that we can work towards a unified goal on what multifamily should look like under the Nags Head. See you.
Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else? Having a motion and a second, and having heard discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. That brings us next to consideration of text amendments regarding the ocean rescue flag system, and that would be Chief Wells.
Good morning again, Mayor and Commissioners. At your last meeting, Ocean Rescue Captain Chad Mott presented to you an overview of our ocean rescue programs. And one of the items that he was discussing was changing the beach warning flag system to a double red flag system that is recognized nationally and internationally. For the most part, there was very few comments about it, other than some supportive comments. One of the things that we were asked to do was work with Town Council Leidy to firm up the language in that. When you look at the section, the town code, section 8.2, one of the, the two biggest changes were the use of the word town manager or his designee or their designee. And then down on the third sentence, during such periods which swimming is prohibited and after reasonable notice given to the public to include posting of signs on lifeguard stands and double red flags at the public access to the Atlantic Ocean. Swimming in the Atlantic Ocean shall be unlawful. And that is the gist of the change. Staff worked with Attorney Leidy to firm up the language, and we're looking for some support to get this changed.
All right, thank you. Questions for the chief? Start on this end. Commissioner Lambert?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Sears?
No questions, chief. It may have been in Chad's presentation to us, but you mentioned nationally and internationally. Is this same flag system used locally here in Dare County throughout the county?
I understand that there are a couple of departments that are actually going through it. I believe Chad spoke about Kitty Hawk and National Park Service.
Thank you. No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing no. That being the end of the comments, I think it would be appropriate, a motion would be in order.
Make a motion to present us, or approve as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you, chief. Appreciate that. That brings us to new business, which would be committee reports. And I will start down here with Commissioner Sanders.
Nothing new this month. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Brinkley?
Jeanette's Pier, we got an update from Mike Ramage. You know, I was out the last meeting with COVID. His update was 2023 was the weakest visitation in 10 years, minus the COVID pandemic year. He attributed that May and June having not very good weather, and July and August, he said the fishing was not that good. They do have some maintenance projects. They're doing roof replacement. It's a joint shared, cost share program with CSI and Jeanette's Pier sharing the costs. This will allow more scientific equipment and weather monitoring stuff to go on the roof, which is exciting. They also have a project wildlife-friendly lighting that's being done. They're also exploring and, and I think will go ahead and proceed with replacing the existing wood-in-pier deck with concrete planks that are stamped in a wood grain, which is made in North Carolina. So, which is, which is good, something that's going to last a little bit longer. And then they hired some additional educational folks to assist with the Springfield trips.
What are they doing with the wind turbines?
We have not had an update on the wind turbine, but if you allow me to contact Mike at our next meeting, or by email to all the board members, I'll give you an update.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you. Appreciate that. Mr. Sears?
Housing Committee didn't meet. Task force didn't meet due to untimely events. And I think, I'm not sure if Andy got the news or not, we were granted by the tourism board an extension on our grant that was issued last year. That's all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
We did meet for the Government Education Access Channel Committee this month. I'll be presenting the budget in a little bit, so I'll wait until then for that. But the one thing I did want to talk about that I failed to mention at the last meeting was that Channel recently released a septic health video for Dare County. I don't know if anyone's had a chance to look at it, but I thought it was really cool because it's something that Nags Head's taken very seriously, and to see that for Dare County, the first thing in the video it says is, "Most people aren't aware they have a septic system," and that's something we've said a lot in Nags Head. And I think it's going to help other towns take more of an interest in it and also help our program have more momentum. So I was excited to see that.
That's good. I'll ask Roberta. Have we, that, that video speaks to many of the issues that we talk about in our septic health. Have we linked that video on our channels of social media?
No, not yet.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, good, all right, thank you, you were ahead of me, I just thought I'd ask. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner. That brings us to consideration of committee appointments, and we have two, one being the Dangerous Animal Appeal Board, and the second being the Albemarle Regional Planning Organization, the Rural Transportation Coordination Committee. So let's take those in order, the first being the Dangerous Animal, and we do have a couple of names. I regret saying that I do not, regret to say I do not know those folks.
Mayor, Bobby Gentry and Marvin DeMers would like to be reappointed.
Okay, all right, very good. If that is a motion, then I would ask for a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, and that is to reappoint Bobby Gentry and Marvin DeMers to the Dangerous Animal Appeal Board. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you. And then the next item is our appointment to the...
Albemarle Regional.
Albemarle Regional Planning Organization, thank you.
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yes.
There are two vacancies on the Animal Appeal Board in addition to reappointing Marvin and Bobby.
Okay, yep, my apologies. So we do have two vacancies, and I think we have two names that were in our packet. So I guess I would ask the board if they are prepared, and I'm, I'm going to say this probably doesn't have to happen at this meeting, if we want to investigate these folks, or if we, to talk to these folks at least, or to, to consider others, but I'll just leave it up to the board, if someone's interested in making a motion to fill one or more vacancies with one or both of these folks.
If they're willing to serve, I'm willing to nominate.
Okay, all right, very good.
Right, I'll nominate Corey McNeely and Robert Snyder to the Dangerous Animal Appeal Board.
Second.
Very good, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you. All right, now the ARPO.
I'll nominate Joe Costello.
Okay, all right, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to nominate Mr. Costello to the committee. Mr. Costello willing to serve?
Yes.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you. That brings us to consideration of a revised residential recycling contract, and Ms. Miller.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Today, I would like to ask you all to take some action for consideration of our subscription residential curbside recycling service. Currently, TFC performs this service for the town, and the contract is over in May. So we solicited an RFQ to, for people to submit proposals to receive an exclusive franchise per ordinance for a three-year residential curbside subscription-based recycling collection service in the town, and this also includes town properties. You can see in the memo the criteria that we had asked for. We've received one responsive bid, and that was from TFC, to continue that service with them. There was a price increase, the price is $19.85 per month, and with that, we would need an ordinance change. So today I would be asking consideration to approve the contract, consideration to revise the ordinance, and we would also like guidance on if we, the board would like to change the current town subsidy, which is $5 a month. And if you have any other questions, that is what we would be bringing to you today.
Amy, how many, how many subscriptions do they have?
I think we have roughly 900.
Any other county, or any other town in the county using this service?
As far as I know, Duck does, but I don't think it's a voluntary subscription service. I think it's a service the town provides.
Do we know what Duck pays?
We, I think it, we...
We, we, we did get their contract, and since it's a townwide service, they, the contract is based on a cost per subscriber, and they have the service once a week from May 1 to October 30th, and then for the rest of the year, they have the service twice a month, and there's a different rate per household for the, two different timeframes. They pay roughly $7.30 per household for the once a week collection, and then about $5.70 per household for the twice a month collection. So it's substantially cheaper per household, and that's just a fact of they're providing the service to roughly 2,400 homes, so that as the number of homes goes up, the cost goes down. And so since we only have about 885 subscribers, we just don't benefit from that economies of scale.
What day do they get delivered, or do they get picked up?
It's, I believe it's on Monday.
Monday. So technically, they've got 30, 3,400, or 3,285 people that are...
Thought it was 2,400.
Well, total, they're picking up 4,000 people, right?
Between us and them.
Yeah, roughly. So if they're picking it all up on the same day, then why are we paying twice as much? They got a truck here doing the same work. I would, I mean, personally, I'd like to negotiate that down, and if it has to be one day a week instead of four days, four times a month, if it has to be twice a month, like on their schedule, I would be more willing to do that. I don't know that our recycling tons equal one day a week, four times a month, 52 weeks a year.
Well, I guess, we, we, the town is paying a subsidy, but the, the property owners are paying the fee in Duck, I mean in NAGSAD, not, not the town. Currently, we're paying $5 a month, a subsidy, and then the property owner's paying the rest, it's roughly $10.33 per month. You know, looking at once, I think the reason Duck does once every other weekend in the off season is fairly obvious, in the summertime, it would be difficult to have it once every other month with weekly rentals.
But Duck has weekly rentals as well.
Correct. You know, so...
I don't want to be the big account paying the majority of the money, and I don't feel that if one-third of our residents are receiving this treatment, even though they're paying two-thirds of the cost share, that we should continue to look at this as a tax burden. I know we want to offer the service, and that's great, and the services in town are also showing up in comments by, by folks about the beauty of the town. But somewhere, we're being charged twice to three times as much for somebody who's already here to pick up an extra 850, 885 cans. So mathematically, we're, we're subsidizing the town of Duck, if you wanted to look at it from my angle.
Well, you know, one of the interesting things we were looking at, you know, I, I know you asked me this question, and we got their contract and took a look at it, and if you look at the number of properties in Duck and the rates they're charged, it ends up being about $200,000 in total for the contract. If you look at what they're proposing for their rate and the number of subscribers in NAGSAD, it's almost exactly the same amount. It's my point.
You're here already.
And, and so I think that that's intentional, you know, I think that what it reflects is that they're, they're going to make their money, no matter how many subscribers we have. I mean, there's a certain amount of money they need to make in order to offer the service, and that's what, what's reflected in their bid. And so, you know, I think one of the things that we could be looking at is if, if we, if we reduced it to a certain extent, they may not be willing to provide the service because it just doesn't make sense for them, you know, to come down here with drivers and trucks and do that, and I think that's being reflected in the bid. You know, we, we don't have a lot of bidders offering this to us, so...
And that's because we require a letter that basically states that it has to be recycled material.
Well, that's the purpose of the contract.
That is the purpose of the contract, so I mean, we can continue to do this recycling program, feel good, do the right thing, bump it up the percentage that you're requesting, or we can renegotiate with them, they're here, they're doing the work. I mean, I would like to have that as an option, instead of just spending, although frivolously, a very little amount in comparison to the big budget item. But if that happens now, three years from now, they're going to be asking for the same thing, and then three years from then. So what happens if, let's say, I don't want to pay the extra $5 a month, and I drop, now with your subscription 600 instead of nine, or 885? I mean, is the town picking up the other to continue to do it in good faith? I'm just throwing those options out there. I think that, yes, it's small, and the contract doesn't end till May, and we have two months to negotiate this.
I understand, yep.
What would be appropriate now? Tableing it, if consensus is to do that, to ask the manager to renegotiate, or...
Well, let me ask the, the staff, let me ask Amy and Andy about the timing. If we come back, are we, do we have a mid-month meeting on the schedule?
Not for March.
Then if we tabled this until April and made a decision then, is that enough time, basically, to, to give them notice that we are continuing on this contract?
We would have to ask them.
If you had to have a mid-month to determine it, you can have a mid-month to determine it.
Okay.
And I would also like you to discuss the speed in which these trucks travel down the residential streets. I get a lot of complaints from their, their speed.
Okay.
My wife has complained about their speed. So a mid-month meeting would be the 20th. You know, and, and I, I hear this concern, and, and it's reasonable for us to investigate this. And if we can, if we can do that and bring it back to a mid-month meeting and make a decision, then I'm, I'm in favor of doing that. I mean, I appreciate the concern about the, about the cost to the town, having, right now, we have by and large folks who are happy with the program, and it's not costing us a lot of money to support that program. Having sat here through the discussions about trash days and recycling days, I am really reluctant to open that very far, but, but, but yes, I think, I think a two weeks of investigation and bring it back before us, I think is fine.
Okay.
So let me, let me ask.
I mean, yeah, I'm not saying that we won't end up approving it, but...
Yeah, I'm not saying that either, I'm just saying...
But I think we need to do our due diligence, just for the other taxpayers, just, it's not a lot of money in the grand scheme, but still, it's their money.
Okay, Commissioner Sanders?
I'm fine with that, I mean, I do use the service, and I do know that my recycling can is full every week, so if it went to twice a month, I'd be doing some driving around to recycle stuff.
I, I get that, I would...
That's, that's great to hear, I mean, I use the service too, and it's not out every week.
Yeah.
So, and I know others, I mean, that's the reason they drive so fast down the street, is they're picking one can a street instead of...
Yeah.
You know, some weeks they pick up six cans on that same street.
Well, I wonder what the cost would be if the town picked it up? I mean, if you got more subscribers, would it bring the cost down too? So it's another option.
That's, I mean, there are options.
One of the things we could, we could ask them, you know, because this subscription is done with each individual customer, you know, would they be willing to offer a subscription option for twice a month and allow the subscriber to decide what they prefer? And then look at what the cost would be per month for that particular option, and I don't know if they'd be willing to do that or not, but it's something we could certainly ask them. And so you certainly, you'd leave it up to the subscriber to decide, you know, what kind of service level they want. That makes the route a little bit more complicated, but...
It does.
But they're running every street now, so it's not going to make it any more difficult.
But that's certainly something we could, we could ask them, and then, you know, they could tell us what the rate would be if, you know, a subscriber wanted to go down to twice a month.
Okay, all right, let's, let's do ask that, Commissioner Lambert. Okay, all right, then I think the motion would be to table to a mid-month meeting, which would be March the 20th.
That's a motion I'll second.
And do we know that it has to be done before the April 1st meeting?
I don't know that, but, but my sense is 30 days before the start of the contract feels tight.
I agree.
And in the absence of bidders, you know, I don't want us to, I don't want us to be in a position where we lose the program because we were, because of two weeks, so... Then we have a motion and a second, and all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. That would bring us to items from the town attorney, Mr. Leidy.
Mr. Mayor, I have nothing to present at this time. I do know that we have a request for a closed session to discuss a property acquisition later on the agenda.
I'll go ahead and broach this. Do we still need that closed session?
No, we do not.
Okay. Thank you. Then that brings us to an update on the public services facility, David.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. So up on the screen, I've got an overview of our new public services complex. This is very similar to what's been presented in previous months. We've got it color-coded to depict the various buildings that are currently under vertical construction. Those are shown in the bluish-purple color. The orange color represents some of the more recently completed site work, and the green color just represents some preliminary site grading that has taken place. This plan bisects South Lark Avenue, so on the right-hand part of the screen is the administration building, on the left-hand side are the remaining buildings, which are comprised of the fleet facilities and sanitation building, the vehicle storage building, the equipment building, and the administration building. So similar to past months, we're just going to show some of the progress that has been made over the past 30 days. This is where we were last month with the administration building on the exterior. There was some prep work for the, for the siding that was taking place at that time. This was taken yesterday. You can see some of the siding is in place, as well as the canopy over the storefront. Other work that has recently taken place, this is a shot of the septic system that just went in here within the past week. And on the interior, a lot of the work is still focused on the plumbing mechanical and electrical above ceiling trimout. And other work that is taking place are some of the utility connections. This is Piedmont Natural Gas, which is establishing the gas service for the administration, administration building. There's been a lot of utility work that has been taking place. Not only have we had Piedmont up there, but we've had Dominion to go ahead and start running their cables, as well as some of the other utility companies for telephone and communication lines. Progressing over here to the left-hand side of the screen, this is our largest building, the fleet facilities and sanitation building. This is where we were last month, and you can see right here, this is the main entrance. They have placed the brick there along the storefront. On the inside, they still are working on the plumbing... plumbing mechanical and electrical rough-in work. And this is one of the bays over on the facilities maintenance side. You can see that they've installed the fire sprinkler plumbing here most recently. Going back to the west, we have the equipment building. This is where we were last month. And this month, there's been some preparatory work to go ahead and put the siding there at the top of the wall. And on the interior, crews were busy going ahead and painting the interior walls, as well as some of the other internal elements. One building that, that there was not progress on last month, that we've recently seen some progress, is the vehicle storage building. And so, this is a picture that was taken recently. They've started the foundation work and are getting ready to go ahead and start installing the metal building components. This is a view that is taken from the northeast corner, looking back towards the west. And so, we've got progress that has started on that building. What we've seen is, because of that, there's been a lot of compression there within the site, as far as vehicles being able to circulate and park in that area. And then, lastly, this is the water distribution building, which is up in the northwest corner of the site. This is where we were last month. And from the interior perspective, the sheet rock had just gone up this month. We've got the siding going up, some of the garage doors. And on the interior, we've seen the primer and first base coat go up, and so we're starting to see a finished product there. With regards to schedule, the, the schedule, this is a, a tiered schedule for occupancy of the buildings. The administration building, we're looking at a late April occupancy for that building. That will be followed shortly thereafter by the water distribution building, which is only going to be about a week or two behind for occupancy. Then for the, the largest building, which is the fleet facilities and sanitation building, we're looking at probably a mid-to-late June occupation of that building around that same timeframe. The equipment building, that, that will be ready to go. And then, lastly, the vehicle storage building, which just recently got under construction, we're looking at occupation in the October timeframe. Lastly, I wanted to go ahead and thank the board for coming out last month. And I've got a picture here up on the screen that we had taken. As you can see, it was a cold day out that day, but just wanted to thank all the board members for coming out and supporting the public services project. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
All right. Any questions for David? Come in.
No questions, but I really did enjoy the tour. It's, we've enjoyed the updates, but seeing it in person was a whole different experience. And just the amount of work and all the work that you guys have put in, but watching everyone, they were very busy while we were there, too. And it's really exciting to see in person.
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Sears, you should go take a tour.
Yeah, I will, I will. I'll get to it.
It's impressive.
Do you, do you have an ETA, David? Sorry. Do you have an ETA on total completion of everything?
On total completion, we're looking at the October-November timeframe.
Thanks.
Very good.
Thanks, David.
All right. Thank you.
Appreciate it. That brings us now to our Board of Commissioners' agenda, and Commissioner Lambert with the consideration of the government access channel budget.
Thank you, Mayor Cahoon. What we have in front of us is a twenty-four-twenty-five government education access channel proposed budget. This budget has already been approved by the committee, but it needs to be approved by each individual member. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to take a look at it, but if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them to the best of my ability. And if not, I would like to make a motion to approve.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for Commissioner Lambert?
Second.
All right. We have a second. Appreciate your service on this committee. Thank you. And appreciate the work that they are doing. Is, if there's no further discussion, then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Thank you. Continuing with our Commissioners' agenda, Commissioner Sears, anything else on your agenda today?
No, nothing at this time.
Mr. Brinkley?
If I could just have just a couple minutes and ask Chief Hale to come to the podium, please.
Yes, sir. Chief Hale?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I've noticed while traveling that we've, some of our license plate readers have been installed.
Yes, sir.
There was some information going around on Facebook, of course, because you know if it's on there, it's got to be true. But I wonder if we could just clear up some stuff about the license plate readers. Is there anybody monitoring these tags? Is it live? Are they sitting there watching these cars go by to see who's in it, what plate it is, whether they're wearing their seatbelt?
No, sir. It's not a live picture from, from those cameras. They take still photos as they go by, and a series up to seven pictures can be captured, but it's no live view or-
So it's not checking to see if anybody owes any back taxes?
No, sir. It doesn't read anything. It's only a still picture that's gathered.
It's online.
So-
Not, not checking to see if they have a driver's license, or if they have insurance? Expired registration, none of that?
No, sir. I didn't, haven't seen any of those comments, but I can only imagine. They do not read anything. It does not read the tag, does not get into your vehicle's operating system. It does not know if you need an oil change, or tire needs air, or anything of that nature. It only takes a still picture. We're not monitoring it. We can't monitor it. They're not live views. We have to have a, a case number, or have an active investigation going on where we're looking for something to go in there. Now, we do, right now, being that we've been up and running for maybe two and a half weeks with the first two. We have ten of twelve that are installed and active right now. We are running some tests on those to make sure that our officers know how to use it. We have the policy in place that they have to do this. We have to submit an annual report to, I believe it goes to the legislature, of how many tag reads we do have, how many cases they're tied to. If anything is over ninety days, which Flock automatically deletes those after ninety days. If we were to want to keep a record or photo of that tag after ninety days, we have to have a search warrant in place. If we don't, we're in violation and can lose the program to even be charged by having that data without that search warrant. So we have ten of twelve that are up right now. I can tell you that within the first two weeks that they've been running up, two weeks or so, two and a half weeks, maybe, we've had two successful investigations from it. A narcotics agent that is assigned to the task force, and also HSI, have been purchasing cocaine from a gentleman from Wake County that comes and delivers his cocaine here to build a case. They have purchased just over four and a half ounces of cocaine from him. They thought he was supposed to be coming, got information coming. They entered his tag into our system. He hit at twelve forty-three. We had him in custody within a mile after he passed that license plate reader. We also had another gentleman that hired somebody he knew, brought him here to do some work, gave him a vehicle. Gentleman decided to take his paycheck, I guess, and leave with the vehicle. He called a report. It's stolen. It hit on the Eighth Street camera. We knew he was headed out of town. Then we also logged into other camera systems and found him in Louisiana. And he's been charged accordingly. So, we've seen positive results from it so far. But they're not live read. They can't tell anything about your tags, your driver's license, or anything.
So two successful cases, both obviously felony cases, and not because of someone not paying their taxes or their registration bill out.
No, sir.
I just-
They don't, they can't clock your speed, they can't catch you running a red light, they can't do anything.
It just, I want to make sure the right information is out there, that, that, the, the technology that we're using is for, you know, for solving crime, not for trying to watch over somebody and their movements.
Yes, sir. We've got a little bit more to do than sit down and watch that all day, if you could, but you can't even log in and look at it live.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Appreciate you clarifying that. Mr. Sanders?
Anything, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I wouldn't want to follow that.
I wouldn't want to follow that either. That's good. Thank, and, and thank you, Commissioner Brinkley, because, you know, there's just so much junk out there in the world, and sometimes you just really do have to take it dead-on and, and address it. And so, I appreciate that.
Mayor Cahoon, I have one item that I did forget to bring up with our government education. At our last meeting, it was mentioned, Duck is currently doing, they're looking for the winged horses. They're doing a documentary on the winged horses in the Outer Banks, and they're doing, trying to do research on their own, but they're also asking for anyone that knows of any winged horses in their neighborhoods or businesses to reach out to Kay Nickens and Duck, because they'd like to include them in the documentary as well. There's a lot of history with these horses they've found, and I mentioned possibly bringing up at this meeting, and the rest of the Commissioners bringing up at their meetings as well.
Okay.
So, anyone that knows of a horse or has a horse, if they could reach out to Kay Nickens and Duck, should love to hear about it.
Okay. Very good. We'll do that. I know there's one or two on the beach, houses on the Beach Road, so-
In Nag's Head.
So, yeah. Well, thank you. Appreciate that. The next item is the mayor's agenda, and there was a resolution passed by Dare County on Monday regarding the changes to the rules for wastewater treatment systems. We, we would like to address that. I do not have the text of that resolution. Oh, it's on the board. Thank you. I'm not going to read this, but I, I believe this was provided to all of the Commissioners. You, I think, are aware, and you may have heard from neighbors and others, that there were some changes to the rules that have made it difficult on some of our residents and some of our business owners. I have spoken with one septic business here in town who pointed out some of the, some of the issues that are, that are ongoing with this. To use their words, "This is a mess." And some changes, apparently, there are numerous changes to the rules already, already being proposed. The county, I believe, is asking the legislature to intervene in this, to try to clean this up. And so, having seen the resolution, and if you could scroll up to the resolved part, that the Nag's Head Commissioners request the General Assembly modify these chapters in the short session by clarifying that the rules adopted are not to be retroactive, including for malfunctions, and that our environmental health specialists who are county employees have unrestricted best professional judgment to address the onsite wastewater systems and malfunctions for any system for which operating permits, certificates of completion, et cetera, have been approved prior to one-one-twenty-four. Having seen that, a motion would be in order.
I'll make that a motion.
Second. A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Thank you. We determined that we did not need a closed session. Is there other business to come before the board, before our workshop? Hearing none, then we would recess, I believe, since we are going to have a subsequent meeting. So we are first going to recess to our twenty-four-twenty-five budget workshop, and furthermore to a mid-month meeting at nine AM on March the twentieth.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion. I have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Thank you. The board is in recess.